Good evening and welcome to the October 12, 2020 City Council Work Session. Thank you for joining us in this remote meeting format we're using in response to Governor Brown's Stay Home Save Lives Order. This format enables the City Council to meet and take care of business while keeping its members, staff, and the public safe. For work sessions like this one, no opportunity for public comment. Those wishing to access this meeting can do so by watching the live stream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by calling into one of the phone numbers listed for the meeting on the Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage. Looking ahead, tonight's regular meeting will include a public forum. Information about how to participate in this meeting will be available and is available on the Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage. And as always, other avenues of communication with me and City Councils are available, including email and voicemail. Thank you again for joining us. And with that introduction, I am going to turn it over to the City Manager to introduce our first item.
Thank you, Mayor, and as you know, I'm having trouble with my connections here in the office. So our first option today, or I mean, our first work session today is to talk about urban reserves. So I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca to just give a run through of kind of where we're at.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, City Council. Nice to see you this evening. I'm going to share my screen and start our presentation. Can everybody see that okay? Tonight, as the City Manager noted, we are going to talk about urban reserves options. I only have a brief presentation for you this evening so we can focus our time on any outstanding questions in preparation for your work session next Wednesday, where we will be requesting direction on a preferred urban reserve option. Back in 2015, based on council direction, we made a commitment to develop an urban reserve proposal for your consideration. We're a little behind schedule due to the amount of detailed work involved in the analysis and the need to take more time for public and technical review during the pandemic. However, we're working diligently to be responsive by seeking your direction on an urban reserve option so we can move into the last phase of the project and begin the adoption process. I didn't include this slide at our last meeting but thought it would be helpful to share tonight. Without urban reserves in place, future urban growth boundary, or UGB expansions, would likely be limited by state law to exception areas, shown here in brown. Exception areas are mostly rural residential and industrial lands. Many are already partially developed, and our studies have shown that when we're limited to exception areas, they are extremely expensive to serve and may not meet our community's needs. So if we don't have urban reserves in place when there is a need to expand our UGB next, then our choices will be limited to only these exception areas. With urban reserves in place, however, if there's a need to expand, we have additional options for how and where to grow while meeting our community's goals. And if these goals change, council can direct staff to revisit urban reserves at any time in the future. Okay, on to the options. Using the analysis we talked about at our last work session, staff began by identifying the best urban reserve option to meet a 30-year land need, then evaluated a range of other scenarios as allowed by state law. There were several urban reserve options explored that were not moved forward, primarily due to physical constraints and land patterns that would negatively impact future serviceability. This included a middle option that met the needs of approximately 18 years of growth, but due to its scattered land pattern, it was not moved forward for further consideration. The eight options we started with were refined down to these four with the help of our Technical Advisory Committee, the E-TAC. At the joint work session, most of the discussion was around the 30-year and the 27-year options. So I've provided a little bit more detail on those. The following four maps highlight the areas proposed for urban reserves in green and the areas removed from consideration in red. I'm only sharing the very simplified maps here, but I'm happy to provide additional details and context if requested. So Option 1 includes enough land to meet 30 years of growth beyond 2032. It is the maximum size allowed by law. The land that is excluded are areas with high-value soils, flood hazard areas, and are potentially more difficult to serve. This option meets the community's growth needs for the longest time and has the highest average residential capacity of all the options. However, it also uses the most resource land. Option 2 includes enough land to meet approximately 29 years of growth beyond 2032. Its defining feature is that it excludes from urban reserves consideration all Class 1 land, which is our highest-value agricultural soil. The red area here, primarily between river and prairie roads and up north here, just west of Prairie and south of Meadowview. Option 3 includes enough land to meet approximately 27 years of growth beyond 2032. You can see the red area on both sides of Prairie Road has grown. As all agricultural properties with predominant Class 1 and adjacent Class 2 land, our highest-value soils have been removed. This option includes protections for more Class 2 agricultural land than either of the previous options. However, by doing so, there is less relatively easy-to-serve suitable land, and due to fewer large and flat properties, the average residential capacity drops further. Option 4 is enough land to meet approximately 10 years of growth beyond 2032. It is the smallest size allowed by law. While it excludes the most resource land of all the options, the scattered pattern of properties limits opportunities for efficient and cost-effective future neighborhoods, and it has the lowest average residential capacity by far of all the options. This slide focuses on only the areas that are different from each other in the first three options. It shows the acreage of the land being removed and the overall urban reserve acreage. The developable land being removed from consideration is primarily Class 1 and Class 2 farmland, our highest-quality soils. In Options 1 and 3, we're also removing a small area of exception land along Meadowview Road, which would be difficult to serve if left in. One of the questions that came up at the last work session was how we considered the cost of future development in our analysis. Based on state guidance, we were able to consider the cost of services for future development, such as wastewater, water, fire, transportation, and stormwater. This was one of the factors we considered when evaluating whether land was suitable for urban reserves. We also evaluated the efficient accommodation of identified land needs, which allowed us to look at things like proximity to the UGB and whether topography, steep slopes, or other factors would make efficient urbanization difficult. Both were factors in removing two sub-areas from further consideration, the Dillard Road and South Willamette-Fox Hollow sub-areas, and also for removing the less accessible portions of sub-areas like Crest Chambers, Bailey Gimble Hill, and Crow Road. It was also the reason for adding in the Fisher Subarea, which is shown here off of Highway 126, just east of Fernridge Reservoir, because it was easier to serve and it met more of our suitability criteria. You may find additional information on this in the attachment G in your AIS. So after tonight's work session, we will be coming back next Wednesday on the 21st, requesting your direction on a preferred urban reserve option. Following that direction, we'll be meeting with the Board of Commissioners. After receiving agreed-upon direction by both bodies, we'll begin the formal adoption process with a goal of public hearings beginning in the spring. And that's all I have. Thank you for your attention, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much for that, reviewing that with us. It was helpful to see the maps again. And I'm looking to see if I have any counselors raising hands yet. I have a, I have a, I have a probably not a hard question to ask first while counselors are thinking. When you talk about average residential capacity, what is that based on? What kind of housing is that based on? What kind of land use is that based on?
That's an excellent question. So that's looking at all of the land pattern across the different sub-areas, looking at the size, the elevation, and the topography of those parcels and how they have developed in the past, those similar types of parcels. And so based on the different type of land configurations in the different areas, that's what impacts the average residential capacity. So it doesn't say this is definitely how we're going to develop in the future. It just gives us an indication of how we could, based on how we have developed similarly in the past.
Right. And so it doesn't, it doesn't factor into, I'm not, this is not a criticism, just a statement that I'm understanding, it doesn't factor into our efforts to create a more compact development in areas?
No.
Existing land use patterns, but not what we are planning to do or trying to do?
Exactly. Existing and past land use patterns. And like I said, it doesn't impact how we could change our development patterns in the future, but we don't know that yet. So we're basing it on what the information that we have currently.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right. I also, I wanted to thank you for your opening comments explaining the implications of a lack of decision about the urban reserves, that it would constrain future councils in how the, what land is available for development for the urban growth boundary. And you know, obviously, the City Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission didn't land on exactly the same recommendation, so the work before us is how do we get on the same page? And the significance of doing that. And I, just one other thing, I've noticed that originally with the Board of Commissioners was going to meet on, was going to meet sooner, October 20th, and they moved their meeting out.
Right, because we added a second meeting for council on the 21st, and so we moved that meeting out to November 10th. And that meeting is still tentative. They're very booked up. And then they're taking a three-week break, and so we may have to move that meeting out even further, but we're hoping we can hold it on November 10th. I don't think Lindsay is here from the county listening in, but I don't think she has any additional information on that yet.
All right. Are there counselors with any other questions or need for clarification? Boy, I thought this would be a long, hard conversation, and you're all like, this, so well-prepared for this. There are no, no questions and no uncertainty.
Mayor, but I arrived late and I apologize.
That's okay. I'm happy to see you.
Yeah, this is, this is Alan. I'd like to, I have a question though.
Okay, well, Alan, take it away.
So how, I sent this in as an email. How, so the Planning Commission for Lane County suggested that, suggested that we, at the, almost at the bottom of page four, that we adopt the 30-year option and that, and that the Class 1 and 2 farmland, the Aubrey Eric Subarea, would be last of the urban reserve plan to be considered for expansion on a five-to-three vote. So how exactly would we do that and guarantee that that would be? Would that mean that all other parcels would need to be developed and then we could look at that? Or how, what would that mechanism be? That's question A. And how could we ensure it is question B? And then question C was, it kind of brings up a whole notion of, well, if we could do that, why wouldn't we do it in like several phases? Like first 10 years, these properties can be developed. And in years 11 through 20, these properties can be developed. And then from 21 to 30, these properties can be developed. And then the last one's being Aubrey area. Is it possible to do that type of analysis? I mean, that's essentially what the Planning Commission in Lane County was asking to do, but in a smaller scale.
Those are really good questions. I was surprised there was no conversation about it at the last meeting. So I'm gonna ask Emily to jump in because she has advised the Planning Commission a bit and has been looking into this, this slightly different plan policy adjustment they have suggested.
So I'm not sure how much you were able to review the deliberations of the Lane County Planning Commission, but they had a difficult time coming up with a recommendation. Initially, the first meeting where they attempted to do so, none of the four options got the majority vote. So this was kind of a happy medium for them to move the item on, not one that, from a lawyer's perspective, I'm in love with, only because it's kind of novel. And this process is so prescriptive that the idea of doing something unusual or unanticipated in the process doesn't thrill me. We will certainly have opposition, sort of no matter what you do. And so throwing something, a kind of an odd thing like that in, isn't what I would generally recommend. But that's not to say that it's not legally defensible. So normally, the way the process works is a city that has urban reserves, that they designate those urban reserves, and then when they're, when it's time to expand the urban growth boundary, they study the land, and urban reserves sort of come, becomes a first priority category of land, along with exception land and non-resource land. So we'd study all of that, and presumably, if you pick a 27, 29, or 30-year supply, you're going to have more land in that first priority than you need to satisfy the urban growth boundary deficiency. So then you have to choose between that land, and there are regulations and considerations that you have to make in choosing that land. I think in order to carry out the Lane County Planning Commission's recommendation, what we would direct you or ask you to do is adopt a policy into the comprehensive plan that sort of pre-studies the land. So that study that we would normally do about this land in the future at an urban growth boundary amendment time, we would put a policy in the plan now that says that particular land is, for purposes of that future study, the most valuable land in terms of, it should be last in your, in your selection. And then when the urban growth time comes around, we would apply that policy and select it last. A policy of this nature, to me, from a lawyer's perspective, I would advise you to just, if you want that land to be protected and not come in except as a last resort, choose instead of the 30-year, the 27-year or the 29-year also excludes that land. Isn't that right, Rebecca?
It excludes some of it, but not as much.
So I, I think there is a way, and it's a way, I'm not going to tell you it's unlawful because I think it could work. So that's the first question. The second question is a much shorter answer, that kind of doing a phased approach to urban, to laying out your urban reserves, basically like setting now out these sort of 10-year serial urban reserve procedures is probably just too far out there for me to get behind. It's just, I can't quite see how that could comport with the process that we're given. So I would advise against that.
I was trying to make your head explode, Emily.
Well, almost.
But so, so one of the issues with, with that Lane County's recommendation is that part of AIS says that they did an analysis, which is the graph, about ease of serviceability, and the number one easiest place to service is Aubrey. So logic dictates that that would be one of the first places to be developed, unless we put some restriction on it or didn't include it. So I don't know how, if your recommendation is not to add some out of the ball, out of the ballpark kind of conditions or phasing it in, then I would, I would suggest that we look at probably just 27, and that's a lot cleaner and easier to do. And someday down the road, we can add that property in.
Okay, Mike, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Alan hit on the issue that I was gonna ask about, and different fashioned question, but still essentially the same sort of information that I was looking to find. I would say, however, that I thought that Lane County's solution here was an elegant compromise to the fights. My, the question that remains then is, if we insist on the 27-year option or the 29-year option, and Lane County insists on their compromise, how much time does this add to the process of, of this whole thing? And how much money does it add to the process?
You mean if you don't initially reach an agreement or consistent direction? We would have to get back together or figure out a process for coming to a agreement that both bodies could live with to direct staff to move forward with. So it's hard to say how much time or money that would cost.
I know everybody has different points of view on this, and it's not an easy subject for us to talk about. Again, I, I would hate to see us get into a long battle with the county, much less all of the different factions of people who have different points of view on this, especially when I, as I said, I think they've come up with an elegant solution, even though our lawyers don't like it very much. I, I don't think Emily will mind. She's a hard worker. She can handle it. And I would, I would probably be more in favor of, of trying to match up with the county as quickly as we could. So, thank you.
Okay, any other counselors with questions or comments on that?
I had one more.
Okay, go for it, Alan.
So, so yeah, it was, it's our process that we initiated. We did all the work. We did almost all of the public involvement. Maybe you can, so a little, I know this is a partnership on this, and we both have to come to agree with it, but I would think that the county might want to respect all the work that we did, came up with, and our, our process, a workable solution as opposed to one that our lawyers say wouldn't work. Maybe, could someone go over the, the Maybe, could someone go over the, the process that the city of Eugene went through to get the recommendations and all the public involvement and the process the county did so far?
Well, we don't have separate processes that we're undergoing, we are working in collaboration with the county. Lindsay Eichner is the principal planner over there, and she sits on our project management team, and she is participating this evening, I think she is still here. And we meet monthly and coordinate with the county, but you're absolutely right, the city has is the agency that directed staff to do this work and has directed resources to do that. The county has directed resources in terms of staff, but all of the funding is so far is coming from the city, so it's a joint project, we're not on separate trajectories, so when we're doing our public involvement, we are actually reaching out to folks in the county in our study area to sending them postcards trying to get their participation. So, does that answer your question?
Well, in part, but we also, I, I understand the project team had county people on it, but we also had the envision Eugene Technical Advisory Committee reading off a fat haphazard, which has ten people on it. And then the triple bottom line standing board, it says another ten people on it, and we did this service provider working group, which has like many people on it, and so and most of the legal and technical work has been done by the city of Eugene. And so the counties, while they've been participating, what they've done was look at the analysis and run it through their planning commission.
They have been assisting with the analysis and we've also been trying to have county representatives on those three groups that you mentioned, but they are certainly weighed more heavily on the city side. There, there's one county representative on the E-TAC. The Service Provider Working Group had a number of folks from the county looking at transportation impacts, so we have been trying to include and other service providers who are providing services in the county, so we have been trying to include them, but it's definitely being driven by the city.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, I see, is your hand up for a second round, go for it.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I just heard Alan say something and I wanna make sure I didn't mishear Emily. You did say that the county's compromise solution is both legal and, and possible for us to do, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I mean I-
I heard you said it's not your first choice, I heard you say that. But Alan mentioned that it's not possible or not legal, and I just wanna make sure I didn't hear you wrong, you did say that was legal and possible to do, right?
I think so, I mean, I, I think it's an unusual thing.
Okay, just wanna make sure, thanks.
So, the good news is that we go through our process first, so it's a good chance that the county will will listen to your discussions and also fall in line with where the, where the, this body feels they need to go, so it, it's interesting and challenging, and I really appreciate the work that went into this, the the technical advisory group, E-TAC, doing so many hours of work to get us to this point, so thank you for that, I love the maps. Very interesting, and, and I think we are with that, it looks like there are no other questions or comments, so we're running actually a little ahead of schedule, so thank you very much for that report and update, and I guess we'll see you again in a week or so. And manager, I think we're ready for our next item of business.
Yeah, thank you Rebecca and team, that we're all here from the county as well. And our next item, I think I'm just kicking over to you Amanda, is that correct? Perfect, thank you.
Hi counselors, Mayor, I have a quick presentation that will get loaded. Okay. So, tonight I am here to talk about United Parcel Services, better known to all of us as UPS. After operating out of a leased building in Glenwood for over forty years, UPS has decided to build a new ten million dollar facility in Eugene. The property is located in the West Eugene Enterprise Zone, and they have submitted an application for the tax exemption. In addition, they have requested the two-year extension to the standard three-year exemption period, which is a total of five years. Today, council is asked to consider their request, including the additional conditions they've agreed to, should the request be approved. The resolution you're considering today would authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with UPS and Lane County for the two-year extension. The last time you considered a two-year extension request was for Yogi T in twenty seventeen. This has been a few years since we've talked to you about the Enterprise Zone program, I'll do a quick summary. The Enterprise Zone is a state program designed to encourage job creation and local investment within the manufacturing and traded sectors. The program, which is authorized by the state, is one of the few tools that we have to support these industries. It offers short-term property tax exemptions on new investments made by businesses that are growing their workforce. In short, the program offers a standard three-year property tax exemption made on investments in the zone boundary. Investments include new buildings and structures, modifications or additions, and installed machinery and equipment. Vehicles and personal property do not qualify, and the exemption only applies to new investments being made. So businesses will still continue to pay property taxes on the land and any existing buildings on the site. In order to qualify for the program, eligible business activities include manufacturing, processing, distribution, and warehousing. Businesses must also increase their number of full-time permanent jobs by at least ten percent by the time they file their first exemption claim, and they must maintain, maintain this job growth throughout the exemption period. Finally, in addition to the basic program requirements, the West Eugene Enterprise Zone has additional public benefit criteria that businesses must meet to qualify for the full tax exemption. The criteria encourage businesses to take steps towards achieving certain community goals and priorities, such as offering high wages, employee benefits, or taking steps to reduce their environmental impact. There is also an exemption cap, which limits the amount of exemption a business can receive, depending on the number of jobs they've created. And council last updated this criteria in twenty seventeen. Some examples of recent businesses that have participated in the Enterprise Zone include Archimoto, Yogi T, Strapworks, and Snowtemp. Since this iteration of the zone was designated in two thousand and five, twenty-eight businesses have participated in the program, investing over one hundred and seventy-three million and creating over eight hundred jobs. Currently, the zone averages an exemption of about seventy-five hundred dollars per job created. Now to today's topic, UPS plans on building a new packaging and distribution center at a property located along Irving Road, between Prairie Road on the west and Northwest Expressway and the railroad on the east. The property is located in the urban growth boundary and in the West Eugene Enterprise Zone, however, it is not located within city limits, meaning the property owner does not pay property taxes to the city. The property is separated from the city limits only by the railroad tracks on the east, and there is an annexation agreement that does run with the land. As I mentioned, UPS has been operating their customer service center at a leased building in Glenwood. Construction of this ten million dollar, forty-three thousand square foot facility gives UPS the ability to handle increased levels of package volume and would be a long-term investment in Eugene. They will be moving their sixty-eight Glenwood employees to this location and have committed to creating at least seven jobs. They expect to begin operations at this building by September twenty twenty-one. Approved Enterprise Zone businesses receive the standard three-year property tax exemption as long as the investment is eligible and the business increases their jobs by at least ten percent for the duration of the exemption. The state allows businesses to request an additional two-year extension for a total of five years, and this request is subject to approval by the zone sponsors, which in this case are city council and the Lane County Board of Commissioners. As part of their Enterprise Zone application, UPS requested the two-year extension, which is why we're here today. Their total estimated exemption for years one through three, which is the standard period, is two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. If approved, the total estimated exemption for years four and five is a hundred and fifty-three thousand. As I mentioned, the city's revenue is not impacted by this exemption, since the property is not in city limits. If UPS's request is approved, there are additional requirements they'll have to meet. These additional conditions are on top of the standard program requirements set by the state, including increasing employment by ten percent. First, UPS will need to meet the state requirement for compensation. That is that the compensation for new employees must be greater than or equal to one hundred and fifty percent of the county's average wage. Right now, a hundred and fifty percent is about sixty-five thousand, six hundred dollars. The state built in this requirement to ensure that businesses who receive the additional exemption are creating good, high-wage jobs. Also, in recognition of the additional two years of exemption, UPS has agreed to contribute fifty thousand dollars and donate two vehicles to LCC's diesel technology program. The two-year program trains mechanics, and UPS's donation would directly support their classrooms. The fifty thousand dollars in funds would be used to expand the program's inventory of tools and equipment, and the vehicles would serve as lab training stations, allowing for hands-on practice. The city manager recommends approval of the resolution, thus approving UPS's request for the extended Enterprise Zone exemption. After leasing a building for their operations for forty years, this investment and construction of a new facility shows a long-term commitment to the community. And not only will UPS be directly creating the seven new jobs, but their contributions to LCC will be an investment in developing long-term skills in our workforce. Should council approve the resolution today, the county board of commissioners would consider the request next. If both approve, we would then enter into an agreement with UPS and the county, consistent with the terms in the resolution. And with that, we'll hand it back to you, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for that, it was actually, even though I'd read the packet carefully, it was actually pretty helpful to hear your your summary of it, I, while I'm waiting for counselors to think through what their questions are, I do have one, and and you referred to an annexation agreement, and could you clarify that?
Yeah, I'm not an expert, and I only learned about these, this recently, but these are for sites that are specifically in the I C C O. So they're sites that are in the U G V, they are not contiguous to city limits, so they are not eligible to be annexed into the city, but this allows them to connect to city services, and I see Alyssa is on the call, so she can also jump in if there's anything major that I missed.
You did a great job Amanda, I would just wanna add that they, it does require them to annex at the time that they can.
And, and, and how is that determined, the time that they can annex, how is that known?
I believe it's when, okay, there's Alyssa.
Yeah, it's when they are, it's when they can meet the annexation criteria, so in this case, they are not contiguous with the city limits, so they would need to be contiguous to the city limits in order to be able to be eligible to annex.
So the city limits have to come to them, basically, got it, got it, okay. I have Mike and then Chris in the queue, Mike, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for the presentation, does their property abup, abrupt, I can speak, really, does their property abut the railroad?
Yes, it does.
So there was some discussion at one point about that being sufficient to create eligibility for annexation in the I C C O stuff previous, in previous iterations of that discussion. Can you inform me, Alyssa, how that came out, or whether that's still a potential opportunity, or what's the nature of that conversation with the railroad as a public facility?
A good memory, Councilor Clerk, yeah, there was-
I don't forget much, yeah.
Were we, because if they're across, the, the way the annexation rules read, that if you're across the right-of-way, so across the street from annexed property, that is considered contiguous in terms of what state law says, and we were hopeful that a railroad right-of-way would have the same status as a street right-of-way, and we learned through an appeal that it does not, and so railroad right-of-way is not gonna help them in regards to annexation.
But if we talk to our friends in the legislature and they passed, say, another Getty bill, like we did in the temporary scenario previously, would that apply to commercial as opposed to just residential property? As it did before, maybe that's a Catherine question. Are you familiar with that two-year law change that was done at the state legislature?
I am, it was very specific to, it was written-
Drawn narrowly, yeah.
It was drawn super narrowly, so would the legislature be able to do something that was drawn narrowly in a different way? Yes, I'm not aware of anything that would prevent them from being able to do that, but that was, that was a very unique one off.
Yeah, I, I remember that, and, and personally, I hope that our legislature has the opportunity to do something similar in the future with regard to our, our our work to perhaps make it attractive for residents in the River Road and Santa Clara area to annex in, and it would probably require another iteration of that Getty bill in order to get the islanded folks eligible. But I, I'm kinda wondering, the legislature could do that, though, would it, would it require different language to do it, for a commercial property or a, a industrial property as opposed to a residential property? I mean-
I'd wanna go back and just refresh my memory exactly what the language was, of that getting amendment.
There were like, there were like three wherances.
Yep, and again, I did, I just, I don't know what the limitation would be of what it would prevent it from extending it to different types of property. I, nothing comes off the top of my head, but again, I haven't looked at the exact language for, for a couple of years now, actually, so I'm happy to do that, though.
And lastly, and I'm not sure who to target this question for, if and when they do come into the city limits, what will, in, in a non-exemption year, what would their property taxes be?
I don't know that, I mean, I can tell you, once, right now, if they get the exemption in year six, their total would be about a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, right now, it's about eight, nine, eight thousand a year that it's generating, so it'd be more than that.
Right, so that's the, the hundred and sixty-nine is the amount of, of, of the exemption, or that's the amount that they would pay after the exemption?
After the exemption.
And so we don't know the amount of the exemption in that year?
Well, in year six, the exemption would be over.
I'm sorry, I'm, maybe I'm in five years. Right, I'm, so you're saying that in years, in year six, they would pay a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in property taxes?
Yes, but that, that's, that's not when, within city limits, so that would just be going to county school, so I, I don't-
Calculate that one quickly for me, based on the seven and, you know, seventy-two cents or whatever it is for thousand?
I'm not sure, maybe I can get some-
I think we're gonna have to get back to you on that.
Is there a red number, you could, you could say, is it in the millions, is it in the hundreds of thousands, is it in the, where would it be roughly?
I'm, I'm not sure.
If the, if the small amount that's non-city is a hundred and sixty-nine, it seems like it would be several hundred thousand.
Probably, yes, yeah.
To maybe half a million even at that point. I, it's my belief that these folks will, at some point, be close to, if not i- if we do our work successfully with annexation opportunities, I'm hopeful that this will constitute a very large amount of money for the city of Eugene. Thank you.
Okay, Chris and then Alan.
Yeah, I remember working on the first committee that set these criteria Yeah, I remember working on the first committee that set these criteria for the Enterprise Zones and the extensions, and this was, this was way back years ago. And we used that for a while, and then we actually met again to beef up the employment, the wage, and the community benefit part, which, which we did. And so the current group of criteria that we're working under now are actually the beefed-up criteria, which I think have worked really well. They've worked well with Yogi, which is the last one I remember we worked on, and that facility is just tremendous. And I think this one will also pay off in the same way. And specifically asking about wages, yeah, the jobs, and the jobs have to be maintained through the whole period, but the wages that are paid within the jobs was also something where we didn't want to just create a bunch of low-wage, minimum-wage jobs. They needed to reach a certain threshold, and then these will do that. So I think it's meeting those community benefit criteria, and it's meeting it in a big way. But the icing on the cake, and this is what kind of Mike was dancing around as well as, as Alan, is it's not going to cost the city in lost property taxes because they're not in the city right now, but eventually we know they will come in. And they'll probably come in either close to the end or after the end of the exemption period, which means when they do come in, we will have helped them build this place. We will have helped them to get all of the operation going, and then we'll start receiving the money. And so for me, this is a win-win, not only for the city in terms of employment and wages and income and revenue, but also for a great employer who's, who's stable. They've been in their last place for forty years, and so they're not in any way a fly-by-night organization, and I think they would be a great, great asset to bring into the city. And when we do bring them in, I, Mike's right on target. It will represent a significant revenue income to the city once they do come in. So for me, this is just a really great opportunity, and we should absolutely go for it.
Okay, Alan and then Claire.
Yeah, I'm not usually in favor of these Enterprise Zones and these property tax exemptions because companies are pretty notorious around the country for, and, and locally, Hynek, Sony, of taking the property tax exemptions, and then once they're done, they bolt. And so unless there is other mitigating factors, I'm usually a no vote. This one seems different for me in that, and so, you know, in those cases, it's a giant giveaway from, from my perspective. This is different in that, and for three different reasons. One, UPS isn't that kind of company. They're very stable. They're more like the post office. In fact, their competitor, the post office. Like Mike said, they've been around for forty years, or Chris said, they're very, very stable business. And I, it looks like they're going to be around a very long time, so I don't expect them to go anywhere. The second problem usually is that there's no public benefit to be had from this. It's just the giveaway part. But in this case, they've actually stepped up to the plate, and they're giving ten thousand dollars a year to Lane County's diesel program for a total of fifty thousand dollars plus a couple of trucks. So they're probably worth five to ten thousand bucks a piece or more. So that's significant community benefit as well. And then the third problem is that they, they don't create the jobs that say they're going to create. And, and while not in the resolution specifically, my understanding is, and maybe staff can address this, is that it is required under state law that they add ten percent of jobs, thus the seven number, sixty-eight, ten percent of seven whole jobs, and that they're required to maintain that over the entire five-year period, including the two-year extension in order to get the property tax. If they don't, then they don't get the property tax exemption. That, that's correct.
Yeah, that's correct. Every year, businesses have to file a claim in order to get their exemption, and on that claim form, they report their employees every year. So if that number drops, we and the tax assessor have to look into that and report it if we need to.
Yeah, it, it, it bothered me that it wasn't in the resolution in the two sections that are the requirements they have to abide by, that this wasn't in there. So for, for transparency and completeness and clarity, I, I would like to add a section C. And when, as an, I'm making it as an amendment, but I'd like to read it now. I worked with staff to actually come up with this language, which would add a section C to section, subsection C to section two, and it would say, for the duration of the five-year property tax exemption, UPS shall maintain at least a hundred and ten percent of the average employment of the firm as calculated over twelve months preceding the date of application for the initial three-year property tax exemption. So basically, it just kind of memorializes, memorializes what is actually the law, but for transparency and clarity, it's added in as, so it's not something that they're not expecting. It's not something that they don't have to do, but it is making it clear that that's part of what we're, we're, our understanding is. When it comes time out, I'll, I'll make that as a, as an amendment, unless someone wants to add it as a friendly in the original amendment. And save me time of reading it again.
Okay, Claire.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. I have to say, it feels a little odd, and especially considering our topic beforehand, to be considering a tax break that for now will only impact Lane County's revenues and not ours. So hopefully, Lane County Board of Commissioner is, is happy with however this vote plays out. But I, like Chris, long before I served as a city councilor or even a budget committee member, I served on the, as a citizen member of the committee that helped create the public benefit criteria for the West Eugene Enterprise Zone. And then obviously, I was on council when we revisited it, and I, you know, I do think this application meets that criteria, and the additional public benefit that's being included in terms of the contribution to Lane Community College is something that our community couldn't realize otherwise. And I totally agree. I think there's a very strong likelihood that this piece of property will come into the city in a future, in the future. So this is an investment in our future and our future tax revenues as much as anything else. And even though you just covered it with, with Counselor Zelenka, I'm still curious about this seven additional jobs because they're bringing sixty-eight jobs that aren't already there. So why do they need to add seven? Not that I don't want them to, but I'm, I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, the, the state kind of put in some safeguards, so people can't just move employment from one to another. So there's a thirty-mile radius. So if you're moving jobs within thirty miles, those don't count towards the new jobs.
Ah, thank you. That was the missing piece. And I'll, you know, let's also point out, you know, the, in addition to being a very solid employer who's going to be, whose services are in high need, higher need now than, than ever before, this is also a union-represented workforce. And though I will say, you know, in my world, we've kind of seen that UPS has been a tough employer to work for in, in recent years with a lot of surveillance and efficient C-measures on how fast parcels have to be delivered. But nonetheless, these are good jobs with good wages, strong benefits, and a voice in the workplace because they are unionized. So I'm in, in support of this, providing this tax break, and this, excuse me, this extension, the two-year extension for the Enterprise Zone.
Okay, Emily, you ready to put this motion on the table?
Sure. Move to adopt a resolution approving a two-year extension request for a property tax exemption to United Parcel Service Inc. slash BTOH LLC for its operation in the West Eugene Enterprise Zone with Counselor Zelenka's addition.
Again.
Any further discussion?
Thank you, Emily.
Oh, it looks like Betty wants to speak to this. Betty, go for it.
Put on your microphone.
Oh, a microphone.
I think in about four months, she'll get, she'll get that down.
Okay, can you hear me now? I will be voting against it. I think every, I think everybody should pay taxes. I would vote against the whole thing if I could, but we don't have a choice on the first three years. And I think regardless of who's getting it, it's some government, and we're a part of it. I think that they should, if we want to give tax breaks, I have a really good idea to the people in the Santa Clara area who might annex if they weren't afraid of paying more taxes. If we could freeze their taxes for ten years, I think that would be an incentive for them to join, and that's a good place to give tax breaks. Thank you.
Pretty entirely, Betty.
Good. Okay, with that, I think we are ready for a vote. All in favor, please raise your real hand or your virtual hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Opposed? One, thank you very much. That passes, and that was a very good conversation. Thank you so much for that discussion, and we are early today. Have a full hour break, and I will see you all in, at seven-thirty. Thanks so much.
We get to eat.
You get to eat?
Yeah.